I'm making this announcement in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, being Chapter 231 Public Law of 1975, laws of the state of New Jersey. The Planning Board Secretary has prepared a schedule of the meeting of the Planning Board of the Borough of Kenneworth for the year 2024, posted a true copy of this schedule on the bulletin board located at the front entrance of Borough Hall, and has mailed true copies of this schedule to the local source and Star Ledger, and is maintaining a copy of this schedule in Borough Hall. Accordingly, the notices of the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act has been satisfied in regard to this meeting. Can we stand for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Pacerno?
Here.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Mr. Clemente?
Here.
Mr. Scudari?
Here.
Mr. DeLuca?
Here.
Mr. Dunn?
Here.
And Mr. Pocalese?
Here.
Okay, do we have a motion for the April 11th meeting minutes?
It's not moving.
Moved by Mr. Clemente, seconded by Mr. Scudari, all in favor?
Yes, sir.
Why don't you guys come up here? What are you doing all the way back there?
There's two seats right there.
Yeah, I mean, there's seats up here, fellas, come on. We need help.
The court has never said that.
Yeah, the court has, right? Any communications, Kathy?
No, Chairman.
Okay, seeing none. Resolutions, Lou?
No resolutions.
So we have some new business. The application 24-00, David Springer, 331 College Drive, Block 101 Lot, Number 8. Mr. Springer?
Kathy, I don't know if this is good.
Yes.
Just publication.
Okay. Before we get started, do we need to swear?
Yes, why don't we swear Kevin and Christian in with regard to this application? Do you swear any testimony you may give shall be the truth?
I do.
Good, now as our board engineer and our board planner. Mr. Springer, I guess you are here conducting this whole thing on your own, right?
Hi, my son and my wife, house.
Okay, how you doing? All right, so with this, you know, the board, a lot of people are sometimes afraid of the board, but we're a bunch of nice guys and girls, and we're here to help and guide you along as well. So any thing that Mr. O'Brien can do to walk us along with this, it'll be somewhat of a smooth transition, I believe, okay?
Appreciate it, Mr. Chairman.
Are you?
If you could raise your right hand, please? With regard to this application, do you swear? The testimony you may give shall be the truth.
I do.
All right, just for the record, again, if you could state your name and spell your last name?
David J. Springer, S.P.R.A.N.G.E.R.
And Mr. Springer, the applicant and owner of the property, co-owner of the property?
Hi.
Co-owner?
My wife and I are both on the property.
Okay, good. Thank you. Mr. Springer, if you could, this is being recorded in video, so if you could speak up and project, so when the people at home are listening, they will know exactly what you're trying to do.
Understood.
All right. So, where do you want to start, sir?
I prepared a presentation in response to Shamrock Enterprise's planning report.
Okay. Would you like to do that now?
We can start there, or I can give you a rundown of the overall project.
Okay. Let's do that. Let's go with the overall, and then we'll go to videotape.
Okay, sounds good. So the work that we're presenting to do on the property is to do a renovation of the second floor. Currently have a Cape-style house, those existing expanding to the right of the house and on the rear of the house. The renovation that we're proposing is to redo the second floor in order to meet the existing foundations all the way around. It's really an upgrade for aesthetics, it's an upgrade for space, usable storage, and living space, that's really what we're trying to upgrade. We have a family of five, we have three kids, one older child, but our two little ones are quickly and surely growing bigger, and we're finding that we're getting into some special constraints of that. In addition to that, I am a disabled veteran, Marine Corps, and some of the elements that I've recovered from that injury have caused me to kind of need some additional stuff, such as larger beds, adjustable beds, soaking toes, things of that nature, which my current structure won't support. So... Is that a short and sweet?
This is your show.
So I believe, from what I understand, the variances that I'm requesting the board to consider are in regards to the side yard, we'll call it the right side yard or setback. Current requirement is a five-foot requirement. I have three feet currently on the first floor, that's what the existing foundations are through the first floor, existing is. We're proposing to extend that through to the second floor, not with the overhang, just maintain the three-foot setback on the side of property.
Well, Mr. Springer, I need to interrupt you one second. I should have said this to you earlier. We have six Planning Board members here tonight.
Okay.
And how many does he need as far as an approval?
We have seven, Mr. Blue.
How many?
Seven.
Where's the seven?
Anthony.
Oh, Anthony, okay. You have seven, okay.
We need four. You need four of the seven.
You need four of the seven, so we don't have a full board, so I just wanted to let you know that.
Understood. The second aspect of the request is for the rear setback. We are proposing a ground pool, which would be three feet from the property line and will affect it. One of the considerations that we're proposing is that the town does have a property behind there, which is Lot 40, which I'm sure some of the people in this room are familiar with. It's property that runs from behind 12 houses up through, I believe it's Lot 13, where it's up to 37 feet behind my property, 25 feet. It's unusable property for the town in sense of access and just for plain use. The case into that is Grantford, Arnaud School, so there's plenty of open and field grass area behind us, so that we're not impacting any other neighbors or any adjacent properties. So if we could, I think I'm going to go to videotape.
May I interject?
Not yet, not yet. Excuse me. You, you, excuse me. The only way you could do that is to be sworn in and...
Sworn in?
Yeah, because we have to know who you are and what you're talking about at this point, so we can't just have the gallery doing that, okay?
It's nothing bad.
No, no, oh, let the applicant...
Come on up and please complete the testimony, and then you can... And then you'll have a turn, okay? Just don't forget what you've been saying.
She's a photo Jenny.
You want to go to your videotape, is that it?
I believe that's the way I'd like to proceed.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to move over to the side or shove the lights, and let's see what we're going to do. Hold on, let me just move this stuff.
We tested it before the work session, and we're going to continue.
Can you see it?
Slowly, right now.
Are these, excuse me, you had submitted with your application a number of, I guess, aerials?
I did submit some aerial photos. These are incorporated into that, there's not going to be any new information.
Even, even this?
Not the family photo, that's more for aesthetics.
Okay, so everything else is, we already have, so I don't have to mark?
Everything is on documentation.
All right, thank you. There's not, there's not one new thing that we're going to see here that's not on your plan, that you could think of?
The family, but that's really not...
Well, the family's okay, because they're all cute, handsome beauties.
Mr. Regal may want to enter it as an exhibit, just to...
Just do it, do that. All right, A1 will be the family photo.
Took dirt, I was thinking about, I took Google snapshots from response to some of those...
Let's enter it into an exhibit, it's clean.
Okay, appreciate the break.
Mr. Regal, the entire presentation should be exhibit.
We have...
Because there's more pictures these presentations.
There's photos throughout this...
Yeah, you... Oh, okay, A1 will be the, the entire packet, if you want to call it that, of photos. Okay, we're good.
Okay, so I prepared this in response to Shamrock Enterprise's planning report. I'm just kind of responding to the items that were brought up. That's the best way to move forward with this. So I don't, I assume we have a copy of that from yesterday's report? So this is just a quick jump back from the... So the funny comments in regards to Number 1, the applicant should discuss the reason for the addition, discuss what the front of the house will look like, what colors will be used, and how they will interact with other homes on the street. This is identified as their Number 1. As I mentioned earlier in this presentation about the reasons for the addition, I can talk to the color scheme that we are currently providing. Through that, what we did is we just used some house in the neighborhood, one of these, this one specifically, is on North 22nd Street. These are the, what do you call it, the general color scheme that we're going with, a lighter brown roof, sage green type siding, and off-white type window trim. We are looking at stonework on the bottom of the foundation, as I'm sure you saw in the zoning plans, Adopia filled stone of earth tones. All right, the other inspiration photo that we're hauling in is this one, which is demonstrating the wood tones that'll be used on the front of the house, the gables. There's a similar detail on the proposed plans that show that detail, just to give you an aesthetic visual. Any questions on that? Number 2 is, how does proposed porch covered stoop compare with the existing, neighboring homes have covered stoops? So the answer to this question is simply yes. And in regards to the existing... All right, so our front entrance, so on the left you'll see a photo of our front current stoop, it is an existing covered stoop. On the right is a proposed frontage. You'll notice the only change is that the stairs are no longer, we're proposing to have them come straight out towards the street, as more welcoming and inviting versus going sideways down along the property or the house structure. This is an overhead shot of the plan. I included this just to give a demonstration, a visual. That blue line represents the existing porch. The new is superimposed, which is the dark lines. You'll see that that porch area is not increasing closer towards the street. All right. In regards to the neighboring properties, there was a question that was raised about new neighboring homes have covered stoops. Presented this just so that I have a visual reference. Again, you see 331 is kind of flagging out here, 315 College, 327, 328, 335, 343, and all the stars that are pointed at are all homes with covered porches on the front of the house attached. These are a couple of photos, again, using Google images just to give you some visuals. This is our direct neighbor on the right side, as you're looking at the house. 327 College, it is a covered porch, very similar in style to what we're proposing. 335 College is my immediate neighbor to the left. It has a covered porch, however, no columns, but still stairs coming from the front. Couple other homes, 328 College is diagonally across the street from us. It is a newly renovated home, which also has a covered porch. 363, although the number jumps high, it's only six properties away on our property left. And that is a very similar style, along with my immediate neighbor, to the style that we're proposing in the plan. All right, and then some miscellaneous photos, as you noted. There's quite a few covered porches that are very similar pattern to what we're proposing. There's several more, it's chosen to save you the 15 minutes of running through a book. That's our response, any questions on... We're not following...
You have a few questions, so we'll ask at the end.
Sounds good, appreciate it, thank you, Chairman. Existing garage extends past property line and proposed garage in form to accessory building setback. Please describe how the garage will complement the proposed home in style and color. All wood tones, siding color, and trim colors will be identical to the main structure. Okay, number 4 is an identifier, which is, the property is 50 feet by 112 and a half feet, or 56,000, I'm sorry, 5,625 square feet, which is larger than the 5,000 square foot required for a single home, residential lots in the Mar 5, just as a note, I don't think there's a comment there for that. To the south or rear of the property is borough-owned Lot Number 40, which runs east from Arbor Street, where it's 18 feet wide, and 500 feet later, Lot 39 in Grantford, which is behind Lot 13 on College Drive, where it is at 37 feet. This is identified in the tax lot, which Mr. O'Brien included in his response with the letter. You'll see that property does run for quite a while. One thing to note on this, which is in, we're going to get to it in a minute, I believe.
Yeah, that's Number 8. So I'll stand by for that discussion.
Mr. Springer, maybe if you could just go through where there's an actual question rather than...
Actual number?
So you wanted to drop down perhaps to Number 8? Has there been any progress on the status of Lot 40 and your property?
So the current issues there, current operations of Lot Number 40, we inquired when we first bought the house in 2015 about what the status of that lot was. We received notification from the Borough that there was an intent to sell Lot 40, that it would be subdivided, submit certified letter, I believe it was called, that would be $1,000 per property. At that time, we submitted our certified letter to the town with the intent to purchase. Since then, several requests, I guess we can say, have been made about the status of that block division, from what we understood, to have it be subdivided and then re-divided in order to have each property line up with property lines. And as since, both my neighbors and several others, a long Lot 40 have made the same request. From what we have, not heard any current status of that. Our open expectation is that in the future that will come out, and things will work out in all favors where that property get purchased and extend that rear setback long. I'm sure there's some concerns for my neighbor.
Thank you. Number 9, pool does require fence.
Sir?
What is proposed?
We're proposing a four-foot chain fence.
Do you think 52 inches is required for...
Is it 52? 52 inches shall be required?
52 it is.
52 it is.
Okay, where will the pool mechanicals be located, I would intend?
There's two locations that are proposed, one is directly adjacent to the pool and into the garage on the right side, as you're looking at the property final. The other is adjacent to the deck, where there is a space of the deck adjacent to Lot 4.
Away from the property?
Correct, it's in the middle of the property.
Okay, so between pool, garage, cabin?
Yes, sir.
Okay, here, okay. Thank you. Pool lighting, is there any pool lighting proposed?
We are proposing to new owner-water LED lighting.
Nothing above?
Nothing above, sir.
And Number 12, survey shows that existing roof from the garage and what's called MAS or masked walls, what happens to them as part of this renovation?
Okay, I did move this over just so you can see a current status of what the backyard looks like, as I noted earlier, I'm a little bit of a visual type person. This is that masked wall that is scheduled to be removed and replaced with dirt and grass.
Replaced with what?
Dirt and grass.
Oh, okay.
And the Number 13, the concrete pad in the back?
Part of it.
That's where we go?
Yes, sir. As is the plate structure noted in...
Up above, yeah. Yep, so 14, the plot plan doesn't show a way to access the pool from the back of the deck?
So as of right now, the current drawing, just bear with me while I jump in, I send my good video to this one.
Yeah, on the left?
Yep. So, I don't have the ability to zoom without looking some good stuff. All right, I apologize for how small this is, but hopefully this is enough. It could be mine, or you can...
So, on the right side of the property is the driveway back to the garage?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure if it's delineated, there is a line between the deck and pool and the garage, I'm not sure if that's driveway?
Okay.
Is it?
So what I can answer is the driveway currently is identified through here, and this dark, or light gray line is the edge of the existing driveway. That's proposed to be brought back to the edge of the stairs. The construction drawings will show a concrete pad at the base of this stair, and that will then turn to grass and for access to the pool, access to the yard.
Okay, so people are going to be walking across grass to get to the pool, which is not ideal for a pool.
It is what it is.
It is what it is, okay. So do you have time to put it out?
I know we're tight on impervious coverage, and I don't want to risk any issues, and walking grass for us is intended for...
Does your impervious cover number on the plan reflect the fact that the driveway's coming to the right?
It does not, it actually shows it to the existing one.
So you've got some space?
Void over?
You don't, apparently. I don't know how much, but you've got some room. And I presume the driveway's going to be cut back to the front garage for that removal? So you may want to consider that before the end of the hearing, give it some thought.
Okay. Would it be a fair statement to say that if a lot of coverage is permitted, I'll put aside our, into the paper-type impervious walkway, reported in point B?
You could say...
Was it a restriction that says maintain impervious coverage?
If that's your proposal, sure.
I tested it, and there's no issues. Yeah, okay.
Gentlemen, you need to speak up so we could hear you, and I can hear you here.
My apologies. Number 15, attic, no attic plan was provided, I presume that it's just storage and/or mechanicals?
That's correct, the attic is storage, it is a standard style frame attic. It'll only be used for storing mechanicals. The access to that is through a scuttle type attic ladder.
And what's the size of the attic? Is it standing second floor?
It is, it is 1,244 square feet, tapering from zero at the eaves to 11 foot 4, is what is proposed, as of right now.
And same with the basement, there's some squiggles on the plan, but they're not identified, so I presume some stuff is going, new stuff is going in, stuff exists?
So with the, I appreciate the zoning drawings, so that way you can see what's already documented and not looking at forward documents. And this is what you're looking at, so this is the layout of our basement, I assume those lines are these line, these boxes, and the circle?
Plus the wall, which is dashed, is that proposed, going away?
So, okay, so I see where you're going. This dashed line is the line of the five-foot setback, which is that note right here?
Okay, and the wall, to the left, the utility area, these dashed lines?
So this dashed line here?
No, to the left of where is stated the utility area, there?
This dashed line is an existing foundation line, which is no longer a wall bearing, which will be removed.
Okay.
So this is an existing space that's already, has a concrete floor to it, it's just a make-up.
So that's opened up, and the stairways go away?
Stairway relocates to this side. This dashed box was a discussed proposed line from the first floor of the basement, we're not sure that that's even going to happen, it was just something that identified where it would transpose between first floor and basement.
Nothing else is proposed, though?
No, sir, the, this dashed box, I'll just explain what everything is, but this dashed box is the existing utility where the HVAC equipment is being proposed to move to here. This circle is as an original landing location for that box, and this dashed line is the existing chimney that's being removed. All utilities are going to a direct outlet.
So what is a little confusing to me, and I don't have a plan in front of me, because there's not too much room, but when I look at a plan and I see a hash line or a dotted line, there's usually a graph on the side that says, this is going to be removed, but you have dotted lines all over the plan, some are proposed, some are removed, am I correct?
Yeah, I believe there is a legend on this room that identified the line weights of what was proposed demo. Sorry, I haven't jumped in on another drawing, but the intent was to show the light gray dashed as your existing to be removed, and then your heavyweight lines are your proposed.
So could you go back to that other illustration in the plan?
Absolutely.
Can you see that on the plan?
Yes, sir.
I mean, you could see the, let's call it, the darker line being proposed, and, all right, so it's just...
That I couldn't see, and it wasn't clear, which is why I asked what you think meant.
Okay.
But all those lines as shown there are on the printed plan.
I get, I see, I know that they're on the plan, but you, you could figure out that what is being removed and what is being replaced?
No, I could not, which is why I asked.
So we need to have that on the plan?
Yes, sir.
You following?
Mr. Springer, if you go to the top right of this page, is that the legend that you're looking for? Or are you...
That is a legend, and it says, existing wall construction to remain, existing construction to be demolished, but when I look at that hash line, Billy, I see them all over, and I can't figure out which one is going to be removed and which one is proposed. So there should be some type of other illustration, whether it's a cloud that says this is going to be removed and something else. I can't see it from here, and I don't have the plan in front of me, which I read plans every day, so that's... If it's clear, I'm not going to make an issue of it. It's not clear?
No, it's not.
It's a simple, it's a simple adjustment.
And there's dashed lines that... I think it'd be easier if everything was labeled. The legend does explain a few things, but not everything.
Okay.
And what was the square footage of the basement?
960 square.
What lighting is proposed for the front entrance?
We're proposing downlights, highlights.
And the rear, will the rear deck be covered?
No.
Is there any lighting proposed there?
Not at this time.
Okay. And that concludes the questions I had. Did you want to provide any other information from your presentation?
I don't have that need, sir.
Okay, did you want to respond to Mr. Cuado's letter? He raised a question.
You can go to, I believe, Sheet 2, starting with the grading utilities.
Maybe Mr. Cuado?
I'll just, I'll just read. On Sheet, Page 2 of my report, grading utilities, you're increasing the impervious coverage of the area. Was there any thought about putting a seepage pit to kind of reduce the flow going off-site?
The original discussion that we had with our design team was that we're not increasing our overall footprint, the water runoff will be similar. We do have that vast expanse of grass behind us that would run through, so outside of just the roof coverage, everything else is in the rear of the property that is required or requested.
Or does everything kind of drain now?
Right now, it drains down to the surface on the rear of the property, like the garage roofs go straight down to the grass in the rear, and then the gutters, the, on the back side of the house, bleed out into the grass, on the front side of the house, so...
Are you going to be redoing a lot of your roof drains when, you could probably do construct a small seepage pit, if you want to put something in the, either the front or the rear yard, and it'll help alleviate, you know, runoff going off the property?
We can look into it. The concern with the front of the yard, and I know one of the comments that you had on the front was to plant a tree along the frontage, the concern that I have with that is an operational or usage... Um, the concern that I have with that is, is an operational or usage. Um, under the front porch directly down the middle is where our sanitary line was. To the right of that is our gas main, to the right of that is our port. We start to really encroach in on the square footage of where we got rooms and things like that. But seepage pits, I don't think will be a problem. I was, I was actually going to ask if you could, if I could do that in the backyard and have that run to the back. Like the back of that, the back leaders, the rear leaders, rear of the house leaders, garage leaders, things of that nature, I mean, no seepage pit.
That's, that's fine.
So you're saying that a seepage pit in the rear of the house is fine? He's gonna, he's going to have a pool back there, correct?
Yes.
And where does, what is that, what are they going to do? Just, is there going to be laterals off the seepage pit or just dissipate into the ground?
Dissipate into the ground if you want, put maybe a little, um, uh, like casting on top, give it to be plastic in case of it, in case of it overflows, it could just bubble out and go out towards the rear of the site.
So that's not part of this plan, correct?
Yeah, that's not.
And that's something, um, we need, we need to talk about, the size?
Yes. Yeah, it would have to be, it would have to be designed.
And the street tree is square?
I mean, usually we, we request it by the-
There is a, if there is a concern about a sanitary sewer line, I'm willing to, I'm willing to waive that.
Thank you.
And, uh, are you doing any improvements to any of the services leaving your site, sanitary water, gas?
During, um, the curb replacement project that's attended, um, our sanitary line was replaced up to approximately halfway of the property.
Okay.
Um, we are going to replace that immediately, Ron, because as I know, he's going to handle the front stupid, so we don't want any future problems where we have to take up, turn it itself.
But you're, you're not going to have to, we'll do it after road too.
No, sir.
Was that road recently paved?
Two thousand and fifteen or sixteen? No, wait, whoa, it was, it was redone in two thousand and fifteen and then the gas company came in and redid it a few years later. And obviously, uh, you're okay with getting creative improvement from that.
Absolutely.
And that is, that's all I have.
That's all you have?
Okay.
So, Mr. Springer, um, you understand that as a variance request from the board, you've got to show what's called a positive and negative criteria and that, um, you've got to show the board that there are unique properties, um, to your law, um, that affect this application. So in this case, when you talk about, uh, would you think that those unique properties include the fact that you've got this uniquely shaped property, you've got all the properties along Coolish who have, whether by design or by ignorance, have extended their properties into the vacant land behind them, um, as yours has over the years, you didn't get there until two thousand and fifteen, uh, would you agree that that's a unique circumstance?
Absolutely.
And you think that another unique circumstance is the fact that, um, it serves your country, that, um, you suffered from that service and that having a house that caters to your abilities is something that advances the good of the borough?
Yes, sir.
Would you also think that this application would meet goals of the master plan such as ensuring new residential development is consistent with and compatible to existing neighborhood care?
Yes, sir.
So do you think overall this application, uh, meets the objectives of the zoning ordinance, the goals of the master plan and that of this application could be improved?
I believe it does.
I have no further questions, Chair.
Okay. Um, are you finished with your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Does anybody from the board want to look at anything else on that? Okay. So why don't we shut that down, close this, throw the lights on, and we'll have some discussions, right Luke?
Right.
We're going to draw a line there with your, with your, with that, to this machine.
Yes, sir.
Um, I think, uh, if the board wants to hold some of our discussion before, what we could do is open the floor to the public and go from there. And, um, I think what we could do is call Mr. Springer back up after we have heard from the public, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, someone want to make a motion?
Motion.
Motion, babe, by Mr. Morris, seconded by Mr. Clemente. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this application? You can come up now.
Who, me?
Yeah. I would like you to state your name and address.
I'm from a race, I lived forty-five years in Kenilworth. My daughter was born and raised in Kenilworth, but I was not. And when they spoke about the pool back in the eighties, the sorozos, the grandparents, everybody lived on the same block, so they had a built-in pool in the back, cement pool. And one section was four feet and the other section was six feet. And people, you know, they do like take over Orange Avenue landfill land and the sorozos had corn and like a farm back there back in the eighties. But they moved to Freethold. Then the people that bought the house, I don't remember their last name, Linda and Andy, had the pool for their children and they moved, I think, I don't know where the heck did those people move to? I, I don't know if it was New Brunswick's or one of those places, because there's, you know, East Brunswick, whatever. And, uh, so there's always been a pool there and what everybody would tell Alex or David is that they can have, excavate, like get all that dirt out of there, because the cement is well there and there's drainage and all you're doing is like refurbishing and going back to what existed there in the past. And they're good neighbors, nice people. And I'm happy that, you know, they're going to be able to build and expand. And their children will inherit whatever they have.
Beautiful.
Beautiful, right?
Yeah, it's a beautiful story.
Yeah.
And there's nothing like a man that hugs his wife in the courtroom.
Well, I'm a widow, so, yeah, recent widow.
Wow. Well, thank you very much. Thank you. It's, it's nice to hear that the neighbors have support of what, what another neighbor is doing. So thank you for coming up tonight.
Yeah, I support everybody in the neighborhood. I'm not a jealous, envious person. I have a place here and I have a place in Thomas River.
Me too.
And I said, "Live and live."
There you go. And maybe you get to use the pool if it's approved. Well, thank you so very much for coming up. Do you have anything else?
No. No, it's cool.
Okay.
I know I'm loud, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're not loud, you're perfect.
Can you spell her last name?
Can you spell your last name, please?
Oh, okay. It's L-U-A-C-E-S, Aces, like card playing for Aces. You didn't run me?
I don't know why, I think I'd like to hang out with her.
They made me copy on the-
Right, huh?
Yeah.
I want to hang out with her.
Yeah, they made me copy her.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing no one, made the motion to close. Mr. Scadari made the motion to close, seconded by Mr. DeLuca. All in favor? All right, bye. Guys, uh, we need to talk about this a little bit, right? Unless she still wants to talk. Do you want to come up here? Mr. Scadari?
So the only way, weirdly, place I see them increasing the, um, property line variance would be in the rear with the pool. My brother lives kind of near them and I know the hassle he's been going through for the past two years to build the pool and buy the property behind him. Um, it's been, you know, he was here at a bunch of council meetings and nothing but adding for them. So that's really, we shouldn't be punishing people for, you know, our town not, the lawyers getting involved and kind of making it more of a problem than it needs to be. Um, that property can never be built on, built on, so it's, you know, and everybody else, if you go there, has sheds, has swing sets, have vinyl fences, have, you know, everything on the town property lines already. So, you know, I really don't think we can punish somebody for what our town has not allowed people to do.
Okay.
I, I'd agree with Mike on that and, uh, Mr. Springer did address that runoff and disturbances that the setbacks would really be accounting for, kind of moving the scenario with the Orange Avenue field being back there and then this vacant land. So I agree with what you're saying there about where, where they're increasing it. There's really no hazard.
That's good. Okay. Anyone else? Any, Mr. DeLuca?
I recall us talking about this property many, many years ago.
Yep.
And, uh, it is landlocked property. It is, it moves to anybody but the adjacent property owner. I, we determined that a year ago, if you remember. And, uh, it was supposed to be some formalities and then the lots were supposed to be made available for purchase. How that dissipated, I have no idea, but I think, uh, it's, it's worth us maybe inquiring about because it is a, a benefit to the people that live there because they are maintaining it, they are maintaining the properties, they are utilizing, and they're, again, of no benefit to anyone but the property. So, uh, and I, I heard many other residents having the same problem. Uh, I mean, at some point, I think, uh, I don't know, I mean, I guess the council would have to approach it.
Yeah, so last year, the, they went up for auction and nobody bid on them and we spent money to do that and made the advertisements and then people came back to council meeting talking about it again and there was just a missed window. We can-
Why would they go for auction? They would return all the-
The lawyers had the protocol.
Lawyers should have nothing to do with this and they always seem to be a problem, really a problem. It's horrible, I don't think that's-
Property rights are a serious issue that require lawyers.
I'm not, I'm not arguing with you, but it just seems like, it, it seemed like many years ago it was a cut and dried deal and that it was to be done. And now for some reason it's just, you know what, to be continued, because I'm sure this is involved, and I don't have an answer for it, you don't have an answer for it yet, but...
Well, the funny thing with that is, so they were auctioning off a bunch of their properties. They're all about the same width. The, the house, the properties, the houses are on, they're all about the same width, give or take. Behind my brother's house, it happens to be broken up in three individual properties. But three houses down, it's the width of the whole property, but it's one property. So they were all up for auction behind my brother's. Every lot was $4,000, so my brother had three times 4,000 for the same amount of property that the other guy was going to, that the minimum bid was 4,000.
How many, how many actual pieces of property are we, are back there? Do you know?
It's hard to tell because some of them are on the same-
Maybe not. It was subdivided from one long strip.
Okay. Some of them, they were, in the past, they were purchased by the, uh, by homeowners. At some point, if you go on like the GIS maps, some of them are homeowners. The majority of them aren't and it's just, there's garages built on, there's sheds, there's, if you ever look at the aerial views, it's pretty-
All right, uh, do you have something to say?
Yes, so two things. One, just a suggestion, one kind of request. Um, I would suggest not a chain link fence perhaps, because you live right behind the school and I'm thinking about some scant fence easily popping the doors and stuff. And another, regardless of the trees, uh, I know two homes on two of court, one was still at the edge since nineteen forty-eight, we've sat there and planted all these trees. And then there are adding issues with, um, sewer line, obstructions, and also sewer insurance is pretty low. If you walk around our neighborhood there, those trees are all about seventy-eight years old and if you picture twenty years from now, they're all going to be shot down, right? Um, it's really going to change our neighborhood. We talk about seepage pitches and stuff all the time to me. Planting a tree would be nice, so just consider planting a tree. The best time to plant one was twenty years ago, the second best time is today. I think it would be a good, uh, neighborhood, not much of a risk to your utilities.
What sort of fence would you recommend back to-
My parents have a, I, I, they have a pool too, they have a garden, they have a four foot under vinyl, so you can do a cane stuff, but it's less, less easy to scale.
Is there a six foot fence now up against the school property, up at school property lawn, or you did nothing?
Right now, it's a forty-two inch landscaping fence, just to keep the kids from running through. The existing fence that was there when we bought the house, uh, we lost it and it was getting very sharp to our kids. And because it's not our property, we can't, we can't spend for it. So we put up a landscaping fence just to, yeah.
I would do it without school, you know, it's a seaport, two of the fence, it's something else, you know, I would do that.
Okay. Um, you gentlemen have anything?
The board may wish to consider that, uh, the basement plan should be identified and that the seepage pit should be added to the plot plan and, uh, the board should decide that the street tree is for the air.
Okay. You echo those words, Chris?
Yes.
So you haven't got yet of that? So I too feel that the, uh, the, um, Springer should not suffer because maybe the borough didn't act quickly or do what they were supposed to do back when. And it, it, there is no one behind you to say that, uh, you need that five foot setback when you're at three. It's, you probably have more setback than anybody, any one of us have, right? So, uh, I do agree that the, the fence should be camouflaged somehow. If you wanted to, uh, go from that forty-eight proposed to fifty-two and you could put the slats in that fence rather than changing the whole motif so somebody can't see, because it's going to be the newest thing. Uh, if this is approved, that there's a pool there now and I know when I was a little bit younger, like last year, I would probably go and jump into your pool. However, the underwater light that you talked about, the LED, it's not an obstruction to anybody, it's perfect, it's subdued, um, the impervious, impervious coverage, I, I understand what, uh, Chris was talking about. It seems like you got it all covered, but I do agree that it should be implemented on the plan about the seepage pit, this, the size of it. And we can make that, and we're not, uh, very big on conditions here at this board level, but we could talk about making that a condition of an approval where, uh, things like that can, uh, like the labeling of the plan to delineate what is, uh, removed and or proposed, right? And we could do that. And, um, if this is approved, you wouldn't have to come back up here as part of a condition. You would get those plans over to the engineer and, and the, um, planner for review and I think this board would recognize that by them putting eyes on it, that we would be okay with it because they're very, very simple adjustments. Am I correct? Okay. So, um, with that being said, um, I would like to see if someone would like to make a motion to approve this app, uh, Mr. Kevin?
Right, if I may, Chair.
Yeah.
So during your discussion, uh, reminded me that, uh, Mr. Springer has discussed adjusting the walkway to the pool and its impervious cover. Uh, is the board okay with him submitting a new plan, showing a walkway to the pool provided it is under the impervious cover?
Well, based on that, that would also be part of the condition and I think it would be, uh, a plus to the plan. Uh, and I, listen, if the board disagrees with me that they would want to see this again and put them all through this again, it's two or three very small adjustments. I think this could go to our professionals, that's why they're our professionals, and I think we can make this thing work. Does, does this board agree?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the last item, Chairman, is the fence is a little squirreled.
So what is it?
The fence is a bit squirreled.
What are you, nuts? What do you mean the fence is squirrely?
I'm trying to be photogenic here.
I like it, I like it. I have a photogenic memory there.
Should the applicant put a fence across the back of where the fences currently go? Legally, you can't because it's not his property, but the code requires a fence to be put in to surround the pool.
Right.
So I just wanted to put everybody a notice that we're not quite sure how the zoning officer, code official is going to see this. Uh, but a fifty-two inch fence is required, it's been suggested to be made final, and perhaps Mr. Cuado and I could work with the borough to try to work out a reasonable place to put it, even though it may not be under the jurisdiction of the borough.
Well, I think you guys could work that out.
Okay.
All right.
We're talking vinyl or slated, slated to chain link?
So are you, I'm sorry?
Are we talking vinyl or slated chain link to avoid kids climbing up?
So you could put the chain link with the slats that go in there, and then they can't climb it.
Right.
You could also have the decorative slat that looks like tree branch, that, you know, almost like a Christmas tree material that they can't see, and it will give you, you'll probably like that, so there's privacy as well.
The non-climable fence, yeah.
Well, non-climable, he would have to go down to a one inch fence, a one inch, no, really, a one, not one inch high, a one inch fabric.
Okay.
The two inch fabric is where they could put their feet in and grab, but a 52 inch fence, anybody who is athletic like myself will just jump over that fence. So, I, I, you know, if you, you just work your magic there with the, um, building department and, let's move on. Okay. Okay. So, is there a motion to approve this application based on the conditions set forth? One is the 52 inch high fence from the 48, the others are labeling the plan, also size and dimension of the seepage pit, the location of same, and also labeling the, um, the different areas of proposed and removal. And the sidewalk, where that's going to go, and what size, material being used, put it on the plan. And part of the condition is that the board would accept it going to the planner for the final review, and then we could go from there.
How about the attic for storage and, and the mechanicals only? That was indicated.
I, I won't put that as a, no. Do you guys want to put that part of the condition?
It's not even steps going up to it, it's a scuttle with a ladder, so.
It's a scuttle, right?
Yeah, we'll take it out.
Take it out.
Kids might use it for a year or two, then they get older and they don't want to climb a ladder anymore.
Okay. So you heard the, um, what I had to say, and if anybody wants to make that motion based on what I just said? Let's do it. Motion made by everybody, right? Motion made by Ms. Scadari, seconded by, um, I don't remember where you're, who was that?
Mr. Dunn.
Mr. Dunn. I'm sorry, Mr. Dunn, I always do that. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Pescerna?
Yes.
Mr. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Scadari?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuca?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
And Mr. Pacalisi?
I'll address you, by the way.
And Mr. Morrow.
Congratulations, folks. Great job, and a wonderful presentation, I have to say. It was refreshing, and absolutely thank you for your service. I mean, it goes without saying. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Okay. We're going to move on real quick because we could close this out before you close your computer. Any comments for the board? So, all right, seeing none.
Well, actually, Father's Day, gentlemen.
Beautiful. Happy Father's Day, Billy, and to all. That was very, very nice. Okay, uh, is there a motion to open this to the public? A motion made by Mr. Clemente, seconded by Mrs. Scadari, all in favor.
Aye.
Are you going to get up again? You're the public. You want to talk anymore?
No.
A motion to close the meeting made by Mr. Morrow, seconded by Mr. Dunn, all in favor. Motion to adjourn, adjourn, adjourn. All right, everyone. Um, thank you very, very much. It was a great meeting. Congratulations. So you know what you have to do, right, Mr. Springer?
Accordingly, the notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied in regards to this meeting. We stand to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call.
Um, Mr. Pescerna?
Here.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Mr. David?
Here.
Mr. Clemente?
Here.
Mr. Pantina?
Here.
Mr. Mazzio?
Here.
Mr. Liddowdy?
Here.
Mr. Scadari?
Here.
Mr. DeMondo?
Here.
Mr. DeLuca?
Here.
Mr. Dunn?
Here.
And Mr. Pacalisi?
Here.
Okay. That's done. A motion for the approval of the minutes of February 8th. Motion made by Mr. Scadari, seconded by Mr. Mazzio. All in favor?
Aye.
Have at that, Frank. Okay, I'm going to skip over communications for a second because I think that's going to take a little bit more time than item six, the resolution. Application 23005, I, I think we're going to have to carry this to our next meeting because of the, um, Kevin, what was going on there? They didn't give us the proper paperwork or the plan, what actually, because I wasn't here for that meeting.
Uh, Chairman, the board required the applicant to remove the side steps, the right side of the house. They had originally proposed enclosing them and making them part of the house. The board said, no, you can't not only not expand, but you've got to remove those steps because the board was very concerned about the amount of clearance with between the property line and the house itself. The applicant did submit revised plans.
Prepared a schedule of the meeting with the planning board of the Borough of Kenilworth for the year 2024, and posted a true copy of this schedule on the bulletin board located at the front entrance of Borough Hall, and has mailed true copies of this schedule to the local source and Star Ledger, and is maintaining a copy of this schedule in Borough Hall. Accordingly, the notices of the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act has been satisfied in regard to this meeting. Can we stamp and pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Pescerna?
Here.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Mr. Clemente?
Here.
Mr. Scadari?
Here.
Mr. DeLuca?
Here.
Mr. Dunn?
Here.
And Mr. Pacalisi?
Here.
Okay. Uh, do we have a motion for the April 11th meeting minutes?
It's not moved.
Moved by Mr. Clemente, seconded by Mr. Scadari, all in favor?
Aye.
Why don't you guys come up here? What are you doing all the way back there?
There's two seats right there.
Yeah, I mean, there's seats up here, fellas, come on. We need help.
The Cool Cats never sit in the room.
Yeah, the Cool Cats, right? Any communications, Kathy?
No, Chairman.
Okay. Seeing none. Resolutions, Lou?
No resolutions.
Nothing. So we have some new business. The application 2400, David Springer, 331 College Drive, block 101 lot, uh, number eight. Mr. Springer?
Kathy, I don't know if this is good?
Yes.
Okay. Um, before we get started, do we need to swear a stick?
Why don't we swear Kevin and Christian in with regard to this application? Do you swear any testimony you may give, show me the truth?
I do.
Good. That was our board engineer and our board planner.
You wager.
Um, Mr. Springer, I guess you are here, uh, conducting this whole thing on your own, right?
Hi, my son, my wife.
Okay, how you doing?
Yeah.
All right, so, uh, with this, you know, the, the board, a lot of people are sometimes afraid of the board, but we're a bunch of nice guys and girls, and we're here to help and guide you along as well. So any thing that Mr. O'Brien can do to walk us along with this, it'll be somewhat of a smooth transition, I believe. Okay?
Appreciate it, Mr. Joe.
Are you, if you could raise your right hand, please? With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you may give, show me the truth?
I do.
All right, just for the record, again, if you could state your name and say your last name.
David J. Springer, S.P.R.A.N.G.E.R.
And Mr. Springer, the applicant and owner of the property, co-owner of the property?
Aye.
Co-owner?
My wife and I are both on the board.
Okay, good. Thank you. Mr. Springer, if you could, um, this is being recorded in video, so if you could speak up and project, so when the people at home are listening, they will know exactly what you're trying to do.
Understood.
All right. So, where do you want to start, sir?
I prepared a presentation in response to Shamrock Enterprises' planning report.
Okay.
Just in, I mean, our...
Would you like to do that now?
Um, we can start there, or I can give you a rundown of the overall project.
Okay.
To be honest.
Let's do that. Let's go with the overall, and then we'll go to videotape.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, so the, the work that we're presenting to do on the property is to do a renovation of the second floor. Uh, currently have a cave, have a cave style house, those existing, uh, expanding to the right of the house and on the rear of the house. The renovation that we're proposing is to redo the second floor in order to meet the existing foundations all the way around. Um, it's really an upgrade for aesthetics, it's an upgrade for, uh, space, usable storage, um, and living space, it's really a core term upgrade. Um, we have family, five, we have three kids, one older child, but our two little ones are quickly and surely growing bigger, um, and we're finding that we're getting into some special constraints of that. Um, in addition to that, I am a disabled veteran with rework, and some of the ailments that I've recovered from that injury have caused me to kind of need some additional stuff, such as larger beds, adjustable beds, soaking towels, things of that nature, which my current structure won't support. So, is that a short and sweet?
This is your show.
So I believe, from what I understand, the variances that I'm requesting the board to consider are in regards to the side yard, on the, we'll call it the right side yard or setback. Um, current requirement is a five foot requirement. Um, I have three feet currently on the first floor, um, that's what the existing foundations are, that's what the first floor existing is. Uh, we're proposing to extend that through to the second floor, not with the overhang, just maintain that three foot setback on the side property.
Well, Mr. Springer, I need to interrupt you one second. I should have said this to you earlier. We have six planning board members here tonight.
Okay.
And how many does he need as far as an approval?
We have seven, Mr. Blue.
How many?
Seven.
Where's the seven?
Anthony.
Oh, Anthony, okay. You have seven, okay.
We'll need, we'll need four.
You need four of the seven.
You need four of the seven, so we don't have a full board, so I just wanted to let you know that.
Understood. Um, the second aspect of the request is for the rear setback. Um, we are proposing a ground pool, um, with three feet from the property line and look like. Um, one of the considerations that we're proposing is that the town does have property behind there, which is lot 40, which I'm sure some of the people in this room are familiar with. Uh, it's property that runs from behind 12 houses up through, I believe it's lot 13, uh, where it's up to 37 feet, behind our property is 25 feet. Uh, it's unusable property, um, for the town in sense of access and just for plain use. Um, the case into that is Cranford, uh, Armagh, which, so there's plenty of corporate field grass area behind us, uh, so that we're not impacting any other neighbors or any adjacent properties.
Okay.
So, I think I'm going to go to the video.
May I enter, Dick?
Not, not yet, not yet, but, but, excuse me. You, you, excuse me. I, the only way you could do that is to be sworn in and, yeah, because we have to know who you are and what you're talking about at this point, so we can't just have the gallery doing that, okay?
It's nothing bad.
No, no, oh, let the applicant complete, complete the testimony, and then you can turn on the lights.
And then you'll have a turn, you'll have a turn, okay? Just don't forget what you're going to say.
She's a photogenic.
Uh, you want to go to your videotape? Is that it?
I believe that's the way, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to move over to the side or shove the lights, and, um, let's see, uh, what we're going to do. Hold on, let me just move this up.
We tested it before the work session, and it worked, and it continues.
Can you, can you see it?
Slowly, right now.
Are these, excuse me, um, you had submitted with your application a number of, I guess, aerials?
I did submit some aerial photos, these are incorporated into that, there's not going to be any new information.
Even, even this, um...
Not the family photo, that's more prosthetic.
Okay, so everything else is, we already have, starting off tomorrow.
Everything is on documentation.
All right, thank you.
There's not, there's not one new thing that we're going to see here that's not on your plan, that you could think of?
The family, but that's really not...
Well, the family's okay, because they're all cute, handsome, beautiful.
Mr. Regal may want to enter it as an exhibit, just to...
Just do, do that. All right, A1 will be the family photo.
So there, I was thinking about, I could Google snapshots in response to some of the...
Let's enter it into an exhibit, it's clean.
Okay, appreciate it.
Mr. Regal, the entire presentation should be an exhibit.
We have...
Because there's more pictures, these...
There's photos throughout this...
Yeah, you, oh, okay, A1 will be the, the... The entire packet, if you want to call it that, of photos. Okay, we're good.
Okay, uh, so I prepared this in response to Shamrock Enterprises' planning report. Um, I'm just kind of responding to the paintings that were brought up. Um, I'm sure that's the best way to move forward with this. Um, so I don't, I assume everybody has a copy of that from yesterday's report. Um, all right. So this is just a quick jump back from the, so the point of comments in regards to number one, the applicant should discuss the reason for the addition, discuss what the front of the house will look like, what colors will be used, and how they will interact with other homes on the street. Uh, this is identified as their number one. Uh, as I mentioned earlier in this presentation about the reasons for the addition, um, I can talk to the color scheme that we are currently providing. Um, through that, what we did is we just used some houses in the neighborhood, one of these, this one specifically, is on North 22nd Street. Um, these are the, what do you call it, the general color scheme that we're going with, a lighter brown roof, sage green type siding, and off-white type window trim. Um, we are looking at stonework on the bottom of the foundation, as I'm sure you saw in the zoning plans, Idopeia Phil Stone of Earth Homes. All right, the other, uh, inspiration photo that we're calling it is this one, which is demonstrating the wood tones that'll be used on the front of the house, at the gables. There's a similar detail on the proposed plans that show that detail, just to give you an aesthetic visual of it. Any questions on that? Um, number two is how does proposed porch covered stoop compare with the existing, the neighboring, neighboring homes have covered stoops? So the answer to this question is simply yes. Um, and in regards to the existing... All right, so our front entrance, so on the left, you'll see a photo of our front curtain stoop, it is an existing covered stoop. Um, on the right is a proposed frontage. Um, you'll notice the only change is that the stairs are no longer, we're proposing to have them come straight out towards the street as more welcoming and inviting versus going sideways down along the property or the house structure. Um, this is an overhead shot of the plan. I included this just to give a demonstration, a visual. That blue line represents the existing porch. Uh, the new, it is superimposed, which is the dark lines. Um, you'll see that that porch area is not increasing closer towards the street. All right? Um, in regards to the neighboring properties, there was a question that was raised about Again, you see 331 is kind of black and out there, 315 Coolidge, 327, 328, 335, 343, and all the stars that are pointed at are all homes with covered porches on the front of the house attached. These are a couple of photos, again, using Google images just to give you some visuals. This is our direct neighbor on the right side, as you're looking at the house. 327 Coolidge, it has a covered porch, very similar in style to what we're proposing. 335 Coolidge is my immediate neighbor to the left. It has a covered porch, however, no columns, but still stairs coming from the front. Couple other homes, 328 Coolidge is diagonally across the street from us. It is a newly renovated home, which also has a covered porch. 363, although the number jumps high, it's only six properties away on our property left. And that is a very similar style, along with my immediate neighbor, to the style of the work proposing in the plans. All right, and then some miscellaneous photos, as noted. There's quite a few covered porches that are very similar pattern to what we're proposing. There's several more that are chosen to save you the 15 minutes of running through Google. That's our response. Any questions on...
You have two questions, so I'll ask it to you.
Sounds good, appreciate it, thank you, sir. An existing garage extends past the property line and proposes garage in form to accessory building setback. Please describe how the garage will complement the proposed home in style and color. All wood tones, siding color, and trim colors will be identical to the main structure. Okay, number four is an identifier, which is the property is 50 feet by 112 and a half feet, or 56,000, I'm sorry, 5,625 square feet, which is larger than the 5,000 square foot required for a single home, residential lots in the R5, just as a note. I don't think there's a comment there for that. To the south or rear of the property is borough-owned Lot Number 40, which runs east from Margaret Street, where it's 18 feet wide, and 500 feet later, the Lot 39 in Cranford, which is behind Lot 13 on Coolidge Drive, where it is at 37 feet. This is identified in the tax lot, which Mr. O'Brien included in his response with the letter. You'll see that property does run for quite a while. One thing to note on this, which is in, we're gonna get to it in a minute, I believe. So, yeah, that's number eight. So, I'll stand by for that discussion.
Mr. Springer, maybe if we could just go to where there's an actual question around the...
Ask your number.
So, if you wanted to drop down perhaps to number eight, has there been any progress on the status of Lot 40 and your property?
So, the current issues there, current operations of Lot Number 40, we inquired when we first bought the house in 2015 about what the status of that lot was. We received notifications from the borough that there was an intent to sell Lot 40, that we're gonna be certified, submit a certified letter, I believe it was called, that would be $1,000 per property. At that time, we submitted our certified letter to the town with the intent to purchase. Since then, several requests, I guess we can say, have been made about the status of that lot division. From what we understood, it had been subdivided and re divided in order to have each property line up with property lines. And as since, we, both my neighbors and several others, along Lot 40 have made the same request. From what we have, not heard any current status of that. Our open expectation is that in the future that will come out, and things will work out in all favors where that property get purchased and extend that rear setback along. I'm sure there's some concerns for our neighborhood.
Thank you. Number nine, the pool does require a fence.
Sir?
What is proposed?
We're proposing a four-foot hanging fence.
Do you think 52 inches is required for...
Is it 52? 52 inches shall we...
52 it is.
52.
Okay, where will the pool mechanicals be located out of the tent?
There's two locations that are proposed. One is if you're directly adjacent to the pool and into the garage on the right side, as you're looking at the property plan. The other is adjacent to the deck, where there is a space of the deck adjacent to that four-foot section.
Away from the property?
Correct, it's in the middle of the property.
Okay, so between pool, garage, deck?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Pool lighting, is there any pool lighting proposed?
We are proposing to do underwater LED lighting.
Nothing above?
Nothing above, sir.
And number 12, survey shows that existing roof from the garage and what's called M.A.S. or masked walls, what happens to them as part of this renovation?
Okay, I did remove this one just so you can see a current status of what the backyard looks like. I'm, as I noted earlier, I'm a little bit of a visual type person. This is that masked wall that is scheduled to be removed and replaced with dirt and grass.
Replaced with what?
Dirt and grass.
Oh, okay.
And the number 13, the concrete pad in the back?
Part of it.
That's where we go?
Yes, sir. As is the place structure noted in number...
Above, okay. Yep, so 14, the plot plan doesn't show a way to access the pool from the back of the deck?
So, as of right now, the current drawing, just bear with me while I jump in, I send my video to this one.
Okay. Yeah, on the left.
Yep. Show, I don't have the ability to zoom without... All right, I apologize for how small this is, but hopefully this is enough. If it was mine, we'd repeat the question.
So, on the right side of the property is the, back to the garage?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure if it's delineated, there is a line between the deck and pool and the garage, I'm not sure if that's driveway?
Okay.
Is it?
So, what I can answer is the driveway currently is identified through here, and this dark, or light gray line is the edge of the existing driveway. That's proposed to be brought back to the edge of the stairs. The construction drawings will show a concrete pad at the base of the stair, and that will then turn to grass and for access to the pool, access to the yard.
Okay, so people are gonna be walking across grass to get to the pool, which is not ideal for a pool.
It is what it is.
It is what it is, okay. So, to you, it's time to put it out there.
I know we're tight on impervious coverage, and I don't wanna risk any issues, and walking across grass isn't the end of the world.
Does your impervious cover number on the plan reflect the fact that the driveway's coming to the right?
It just don't, it actually shows it to the existing one.
So, you've got some space?
Little room?
You don't, apparently. I don't know how much, but you've got some room. And I presume the driveway's gonna be cut back to the front garage, so that removes. So, you may wanna consider that before the end of the year, give it some thought.
Okay. Would it be a fair statement to say that if a lot of coverage permit, I'll put aside our impervious, you know, the paper type impervious wall line from what it would be?
You've said...
Would it restriction that says maintain impervious coverage?
Is that your proposal?
Sure. I'll attest to it in a way that's...
Gentlemen, you need to speak up so we could hear you on the mic, and I can hear you here.
Number 15, attic, no attic plan was provided, I presume that it's just storage and/or mechanicals?
That's right. The attic is storage, it is a standard style framed attic. It'll only be used for storing the mechanicals. The access to that is through a scuttle type attic ladder.
And what's the size of the attic? Is it standing to the second floor?
It is, it is 144 square feet, tapering from zero at the eaves to 11 foot four, is what's proposed as of right now.
And same with the basement, there's some squiggles on the plan, but they're not identified, so I presume some stuff is going, new stuff is going in, stuff exists.
So, with the, the zoning drawings, so that we can see what's already documented and not looking at forward documents. And this is what you're looking at. So, this is the layout of our basement, I assume the lines are these lines, these boxes, and the circle?
That's the wall which is dashed, is that proposed, going away?
So, okay, so I see where you're going. This dashed line is the line of the five-foot setback, which is that note right here?
Okay, and the wall, to the left, the utility area, these dashed lines?
So, this dashed line here?
No, to the left of where it is stated as utility area, there?
This dashed line is an existing foundation line, which is no longer a low bearing, which will be removed.
Okay.
So, this is an existing space that's already, has a concrete floor to it, it's just a make that.
So, that's opened up, and the stairways go away?
Stairway relocates to this side. This dashed box was a discussed proposed line from the first floor to the basement. We're not sure that that's even gonna happen, but it's just something identified where there were transphobes between first floor and basement.
Okay, nothing else is proposed now?
No, sir. The, this dashed box, I'll just explain what everything is, but this dashed box is the existing utility where the HVAC equipment is being proposed to move to here. This circle is, as I noted, a landing location for that box, and this dashed line is the existing chimney that's being removed. All utilities are going to a direct.
So, what is a little confusing to me, and I don't have a plan in front of me, because there's not too much room, but when I look at a plan and I see a hash line or a dotted line, there's usually a graph on the side that says, this is going to be removed, but you have dotted lines all over the plan, some are proposed, some are removed. Am I correct?
Yeah, I believe there is a legend on this drawing that identified the line weights of what was proposed demo. Sorry, I jumped into another drawing, but the intent was to show the light gray dashed as your existing to be removed, and then your heavy weight lines are here proposing.
So, could you go back to that other illustration in the plan?
Absolutely.
Can you see that on the plan?
Yes, sir.
I mean, you could see the, let's call it, the darker line being proposed, and...
That I couldn't see, and it wasn't clear, which is why I asked what I think that.
Okay.
But all those lines as shown there are on the printed plan.
I get, I see, I know that they're on the plan, but you, you could figure out that what is being removed and what is being replaced?
No, I could not, which is why...
So, we need to have that on plan?
Yes, sir.
You following?
Mr. Springer, if you go to the top right of this page, is that the legend that you're looking for?
That is a legend, and it says existing wall construction to remain, existing construction to be demolished, but when I look at that hash line, Billy, I see them all over, and I can't figure out which one is going to be removed and which one is proposed. So, there should be some type of other illustration, whether it's a cloud that says this is gonna be removed, and something else. I can't see it from here, and I don't have the plan in front of me, which I read plans every day, so that's, if it's clear, I'm not gonna make an issue of it. It's not clear?
No, it's not.
It's a simple, it's a simple adjustment.
And there's dashed lines that, I think it'd be easier if everything was labeled. The legend does explain a few things, but not everything. And what was the square footage of the basement?
960 square feet.
What lighting is proposed for the front entry?
We're proposing downlights, I have it, sir.
And the rear, will the rear deck be covered?
No.
Is there any lighting proposed there?
Not at this time.
Okay. And that concludes the questions I had. Did you want to provide any other information from your presentation?
I don't have that need, sir.
Okay, did you want to respond to Mr. Cuado's letter?
He raises it.
Yes, sir.
You can go to, I believe, sheet two, starting with the grading utilities.
Maybe Mr. Cuado?
I'll just, I'll read. On sheet, page two of my report, grading utilities, you're increasing the impervious coverage of the area. Was there any thought about putting a seepage pit to kind of reduce the flow going offsite?
The original discussion that we had with our design team was that we're not increasing the overall footprint, so the water run will be similar. We do have that vast expanse of grass behind us that would run through, so outside, just the roof coverage, everything else is in the rear of the property if it's required, or...
Or does everything kind of drain down?
Right, how it drains down to the surface on the rear of the property, like the garage roofs go straight down to the grass in the rear, and then the gutters bleed, on the back side of the house bleed out to the grass, on the front side of the house, so...
Are you gonna be redoing a lot of your roof trains when...
No.
You could probably do, construct a small seepage pit, if you wanna put something in the key of a front or the rear yard, and it'll help alleviate, you know, runoff going off the property.
We can look into it. The concern with the front of the yard, and I know one of the comments that you had on the front was to plant a tree along the frontage, the concern that I have with that is in operational or usage. Under the front porch directly down the middle is where our sanitary line runs, to the right of that is our gas main, to the right of that is our port. We start to really encroach in on the square footage of our recovery rooms and things like that. The seepage pits, I don't think to be a problem. I was actually gonna ask, could you, if I could do that in the backyard and have that run to the back? Like the back of that, the back leaders, the rear leaders, rear of the house leaders, garage leaders, things of that nature, wanting to do a seepage pit?
That's, that's fine. So, you're saying that seepage pit in the rear of the house is fine, he's gonna, he's going to have a pool back there, correct?
Yes.
And where does, what is that water gonna do, just, is there gonna be ladders off the seepage pit, or just dissipate into the ground?
Dissipate into the ground, if you want, put maybe a little, like casting on top, give me plastic, in case if it, in case if it overflows, it could just bubble out and go out towards the rear of the site.
So, that's not part of this plan, correct?
Yeah, that's not.
And that's something we need, we need to talk about, the size?
Yes, yeah, it would have to be, it would have to be designed.
And street tree, square?
I mean, usually we requested, but if there is a, if there is a concern about a sanitary sewer line, I'm willing to, I'm willing to waive that.
And are you doing any improvements to any of the services that you need your site, sanitary water, gas?
During the curb replacement project that the town did, our sanitary line was replaced up to approximately halfway up the property. We are gonna replace that, we run, because as I noted, it's gonna handle the front stoop, so we don't want any future problems or anything to be done.
You're not gonna have to use the old inch of road, too?
No, sir.
Was that road recently paved?
2015 or 16? No, wait, well, it was, it was redone in 2015, and then the gas company came in and redid it a few years later. And obviously, you're getting great improvement from the town.
Absolutely.
And that's, that's all I have.
That's all you have? Okay.
So, Mr. Springer, you understand that as a variance request from the board, you've got to show what's called a positive and negative criteria, and then you've got to show the board that there are unique properties to your lot that affect this application. So, in this case, would you talk about, would you think that the unique properties include the fact that you've got additionally shaped property, you've got all the properties along Coolidge who have, whether by design or by ignorance, have extended their properties into the vacant land behind them, as yours has over the years, you didn't get there until 2015? Would you agree that that's a unique circumstance?
Absolutely.
And do you think that another unique circumstance is the fact that it serves to your country, that you suffered from that service, and that having a house that caters to your abilities is something that advances the good of the borough?
Yes, sir.
Would you also think that this application would meet goals of the master plan, such as ensuring new residential development is consistent with and compatible to existing neighborhood care?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So do you think overall this application meets the objectives of the zoning ordinance, the goals of the master plan and that this application could be improved?
I believe it does.
I have no further questions, Sheriff. You go to the board.
Okay. Are you finished with your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Does anybody from the board want to look at anything else on that? Okay. So why don't we shut that down, close this, throw the lights on and we'll have some discussions, right Luke?
Right.
I think if the board wants to hold some of our discussion before, what we could do is open the floor to the public and go from there. And I think what we could do is call Mr. Springer back up after we have heard from the public, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, someone want to make a motion? Motion made by Mr. Morris, seconded by Mr. Clemente, all in favor? All right. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this application? You can come up now.
Oh, me?
Yeah. I would like you to state your name and address.
I'm a great racist. I've lived 45 years in Kenilworth. My daughter was born and raised in Kenilworth, but I was not. And when they spoke about the pool back in the eighties, the Squarzos, the grandparents, everybody lived on St. Blah, so they had a built-in pool in the back, cement pool. And one section was four feet and the other section was six feet. And you know, they do like take over Arm and G M U landfill land and the Squarzos had corn and like a farm back there back in the eighties, but they moved to Freehold. Then the people that bought the house, I don't remember their last name, Linda and Andy, had the pool for their children and they moved, I think, I don't know where the heck did those people move to? I don't know if it was in Brunswick's or one of those places, because there's, you know, East Brunswick, whatever. And so there's always been a pool there and what I would tell Alexi or David is that they can excavate, like get all that dirt out of there, because the cement is all there and there's drainage and all you're doing is like refurbishing and going back to what existed there in the past. And they're good neighbors, nice people, and I'm happy that, you know, they're going to be able to build and expand and their children will inherit whatever they have.
Beautiful.
Beautiful, right?
Yeah, it's a beautiful story.
Yeah.
And there's nothing like a man that hugs his wife in the courtroom.
Well, I'm a widow, so yeah, recent widow.
Wow. Well, thank you very much. Thank you. It's, it's nice to hear that the neighbors have support of what, what another neighbor is doing. So thank you for coming up tonight.
Yeah, I swear to God, I'm not a jealous, envious person. I have a place here and I have a place in Thomas River.
Me too.
And I said, "Believe me, it's..."
There you go. Maybe you get to use the pool if it's approved.
Well.
Well, thank you so very much for coming up. Do you have anything else?
No.
Okay.
I go aloud, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're not loud, you're perfect.
Can you spell her last name?
Can you spell your last name, please?
Oh, okay. It's L-U-A-C-E-S, Aces, like card playing for Aces. Did you run me?
I don't know why, I think I'd like to hang out.
They made me copy on.
Like to?
Yeah.
Hang out with them.
Yeah, they made me copy on.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing no one, motion to close. Mr. Scadari made the motion to close, seconded by Mr. DeLuca, all in favor? All right. Hi. Guys, we need to talk about this a little bit, right? Unless she still wants to talk. You want to come up here? Mr. Scadari?
So the only way, weirdly place I see them increasing the property line bearings would be in the rear with the pool. My brother lives kind of near them and I know the hassle he's been going through for the past two years to build the pool and buy the property behind him. It's been, you know, he was here at a bunch of council meetings and nothing but adding for them. So that's really, we shouldn't be punishing people for, you know, our town not, the lawyers getting involved and kind of making it more of a problem than it needs to be. That property can never be built on, built on, so it's, you know, and everybody else, if you go there, has sheds, has swing sets, have vinyl fences, have, you know, everything on the town property lines already, so, you know, I really don't think we can punish somebody for what our town has not allowed people to do.
Okay.
I, I'd agree with Mike on that and Mr. Springer did address that runoff and disturbances that the setbacks would really be accounted for, kind of moving the scenario with the Orange Avenue field being back there and then this vacant land. So I agree with what you're saying there about where, where they're increasing it. There's really no hazard.
That's good. Okay. Anyone else? Any, Mr. DeLuca?
I recall us talking about this property many, many years ago.
Yep.
And it is landlocked property. It is of no use to anybody but the adjacent property owner. I believe we determined that years ago, if you remember. And it was supposed to be some formalities and then the lots were supposed to be made available for purchase. How that dissipated, I have no idea, but I think it's, it's worth us maybe acquiring about because it is a benefit to the people that live there because they are maintaining it, they are maintaining the properties, they are utilizing and they're, again, of no benefit to anyone but the property. So, and I, I've heard many other residents having the same problem. I mean, at such point, I think, I don't know, I mean, I guess the council would have to approach.
Yeah, so last year, they went up for auction and nobody bid on them and we spent money to do that and made the advertisements and then people came back, council meeting, talking about it again, and there was just a missed window.
Why would they do a promotion?
That's, the lawyers had the protocol.
Lawyers should have nothing to do with this and they obviously give problems, really involve. Sorry, I don't think that.
Property rights are a serious issue that require lawyers.
I'm not, I'm not arguing with you, but it just seems like, it, it seemed like many years ago it was a cut and dry deal and that it was to be done. And now for some reason it's just, you know what, to be continued because I'm sure this is involved in, I don't have an answer for it, you don't have an answer for it yet, but...
Well, the funny thing with that is, so they were auctioning off a bunch of the properties. They're all about the same width. The house, the properties the houses are on are all about the same width, give or take. Behind my brother's house, it happens to be broken up in three individual properties. But three houses down, it's the width of the whole property, but it's one property. So they were all up for auction behind my brother's. Every lot was $4,000, so my brother had three times 4,000 for the same amount of property that the other guy was going to, that the minimum bid was 4,000.
How many, how many actual pieces of property are we, are back there? Do you know?
Nine. It's hard to tell because some of them are on the side.
Maybe nine. It was subdivided from one long strip.
Okay. Some of them, they were, in the past, they were purchased by the, by homeowners at some point, if you go on like the GIS maps on the homeowners, the majority of them are and it's just, there's garages built on and there's sheds, there's, if you ever look at the aerial views, it's pretty...
All right. Do you have something to say?
Yeah, so two things. One, just a suggestion of one kind request. I would suggest not a chain link fence perhaps, because you live right behind the school and I'm thinking of us with a chain fence easily popping up those as a thought. And I know there are cars in the trees, I know two homes on two of the quarter, one was left there since 1940, which is bad when they planted all these trees and then they're adding issues with sewer line obstructions and also sewer insurance is pretty low. If you walk around our neighborhood there, those trees are all about 78 years old and if you picture 20 years from now, probably, God, if they get shot down overnight, it's really going to change our whole neighborhood. We talk about seepage pitches stuff all the time to me, planting a tree would be nice. So just consider planting a tree, the best time to plant one was 20 years ago, the second best time is today. I think it would, the neighborhood, not much of a risk to your...
What sort of fence would you recommend back there?
My parents have a, they have a pool too, they have a four foot long line, so you can do a cane stump, but it's less, less easy to scale.
Is there a six foot fence now up against the school property, up in school property lawn, or you did nothing?
Right now it's a four heated landscaping fence, just to keep the kids from running through because the existing fence that was there when we bought the house, we lost it and it was getting very sharp to our kids and because it's not our property, we can't afford a fence for it. So we put a landscaping fence just to, yeah.
I would do that for the school, if the seep pool, two of the backs.
Okay. You gentlemen have anything?
The board may wish to consider that the basement plan should be identified and that the seepage pit should be added to the plot plan and the words of this island, the street tree is to be aired.
Okay. You echo those words, Chris?
Yes.
See how I got you out of that? So I too feel that the, the Springer should not suffer because maybe the borough didn't act quickly or do what they were supposed to do back when. And it, it, there is no one behind you to say that you need that five foot setback when you're at three. You probably have more setback than anybody, any one of us have, right? So I do agree that the fence should be camouflaged somehow if you wanted to go from that 48 proposed to 52 and you could put the slats in that fence rather than changing the whole motif so somebody can't see, because it's going to be the newest thing. If this is approved, that there's a pool there now and I know when I was a little bit younger like last year, I would probably go and jump into your pool. However, the underwater light that you talked about, the LED, it's not an obstruction to anybody, it's perfect, it's subdued, the impervious coverage, I understand what Chris was talking about. It seems like you got it all covered, but I do agree that it should be implemented on the plan about the seepage pit, the, the size of it. And we can make that, and we're not very big on conditions here at this board level, but we could talk about making that a condition of an approval where things like that can, like the labeling of the plan to delineate what is removed and/or proposed, right? And we could do that. And if this is approved, you wouldn't have to come back up here as part of a condition. You would get those plans over to the engineer and, and the planner for review and I think this board would recognize that by them putting eyes on it, that we would be okay with it because they're very, very simple adjustments. Am I correct? Okay. So with that being said, I would like to see if someone would like to make a motion to approve this app, Mr. Kevin?
Prior to that, if I may, Sheriff.
Yeah.
So during your discussion reminded me that Mr. Springer has discussed adjusting the walkway to the pool and its impervious cover. Is the board okay with him submitting a new plan showing the walkway to the pool provided it is under the impervious cover?
Well, based on that, that would also be part of the condition and I think it would be a plus to the plan. And listen, if the board disagrees with me that they would want to see this again and put them all through this again, it's two or three very small adjustments. I think this could go to our professionals, that's why they're our professionals, and I think we can make this thing work. Does, does this board agree?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the last item, Sheriff, is the fence is a little squirreled.
So what is it?
The fence is a bit squirreled.
What are you, nuts? What do you mean the fence is squirrely?
I try to be photogenic, Sheriff.
I like it, I like it. I have a photogenic memory there.
Should the applicant put a fence across the back of where the fences currently go? Legally, you can because it's not his property, but the code requires a fence to be put in to surround the pool.
Right.
So I just wanted to clarify, I noticed that we're not quite sure how the zoning officer, code official is going to see this. But a 52 inch fence is required, it's been suggested to be made vinyl and perhaps Mr. Cuero and I could work with the borough to try to work out a reasonable place to put it, even though it may not be under the jurisdiction of the borough.
Well, I think you guys could work that out.
Okay.
Right?
Are we talking vinyl or slated, slated to?
So are you, I'm sorry?
Are we talking vinyl or slated chain link to avoid kids climbing up?
So you could put the chain link with the slats that go in there and then they can't climb it.
Right.
You could also have the decorative slat that looks like tree branch, you know, almost like a Christmas tree material that they can't see and it will give you, you'll probably like that, so there's privacy as well.
The non-climable fence.
Well, non-climable, he would have to go down to a one inch fence, a one inch, no, really, a one, not one inch high, a one inch fabric.
Okay.
The two inch fabric is where they could put their feet in and grab, but a 52 inch fence, anybody who is athletic like myself will just jump over that fence. So I, I, you know, if you, just work your magic there with the building department and let's move on.
Okay.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve this application based on the conditions set forth? One is the 52 inch high fence from the 48, the others are labeling the plan, also the size and dimension of the seepage pit, the location of same, and also labeling the, the different areas of proposed and removal. And the sidewalk, where that's going to go and what size material being used, put it on the plan. And part of the condition is that the board would accept it going to the planner for the final review and then we could go from there.
About the attic for storage and, and the mechanicals only? That was indicated.
I, I wouldn't put that as part of the condition. Do you guys want to put that part of the condition?
It's not even steps going up though, it's a scuttle with a ladder, so.
It's a scuttle, right?
Yeah, we'll take it out.
Take it out.
Kids won't use it for a year or two, then they get older and they don't want to climb a ladder anymore.
Okay. So you heard the, what I had to say and if anybody wants to make that motion based on what I just said, let's do it. Motion made by everybody, right? Motion made by Ms. Scadari, seconded by...
Dunn.
Who was that?
Mr. Dunn.
Mr. Dunn. I'm sorry, Mr. Dunn, I always do that. Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Pacerna?
Yes.
Mr. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Scadari?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuca?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
And Mr. Blasey?
Yes, too, by the way.
And Mr. Morris?
Congratulations, folks. Great job and a wonderful presentation, I have to say. It was refreshing and absolutely thank you for your service. I mean, goes without saying. Okay? Okay. We're going to move on real quick because we could close this out before you close your computer. Any comments for the, for the board? So, seeing none?
Well, actually, Happy Father's Day, gentlemen.
Beautiful. Happy Father's Day, Billy, and to all. That was very, very nice. Okay, is there a motion to open this to the public? Motion made by Mr. Clemente, seconded by Mr. Scadari, all in favor?
Aye.
Are you going to get up again? You're the public. You want to talk anymore?
No.
A motion to close the meeting made by Mr. Morris, seconded by Mr. Dunn. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn, adjourn, adjourn. All right, everyone. Thank you very, very much. It was a great meeting. Congratulations. So you know what you have to do, right, Mr. Springer? So you know what you have to do, right, Mr. Springer?